Due to the state of emergency. Cause resolved the COVID-19 pandemic. Versus and then six executive order zero one dash two zero and act ninety-two. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. In accordance with act ninety-two, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with temporary amendments to the open meeting law, I confirm that we are A. Providing public access to the meeting by video, but additional access offered through telephone. We're using Zoom video conferencing for this remote meeting. All members of select board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if desire participate in this meeting by click the raise your hand. Option via video or star nine via phone. Once acknowledged, please clearly state your name and then proceed with your question or comment. The provide public. Providing public notice of instructions for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of necessary information for accessing this meeting. Including how to access the meeting using video or telephone in our posted meeting agenda. Instructions have also been provided on the town website, Euniceburg. Not dot org. See if you're experiencing technical difficulty and are not able to access this meeting with either video or telephone. Please call eight oh two nine three three four four two one. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting that are not unanimous will be done by roll call vote in accordance with the law. We will start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance of the select board members and Larry Jarvis, the chair.
You will turn off.
Polly Rico.
Hello, Rob Clay.
Dean Wright.
So we have a full board tonight and the first thing. In order is to ask if there's any items that need to be added or changed on the agenda.
I don't believe so. I would just like to say I'm glad that Greg's here and we're being recorded so that all inaccuracies can be seen. Um, just like to say, I am not the vice chair and have never been the vice chair to name one. Um, so I don't have anything to add to the agenda. I think we're all set.
All right then. We're going to move on to the first item on the agenda. Which requires an executive for personal.
I'll move.
A second.
Polly Rico made a motion to go executive session. Dean Wright second that motion. Any more discussion? If having none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Unanimous, always have it. We're now executive session approximately six oh five.
Who's going?
Who's going in Larry?
Everybody but everybody but Greg Inflation.
Everybody what?
Everybody but Greg Inflation can go into the breakout.
And Sean stays out as too, I believe.
So ambulance personnel then.
Yeah, ambulance, I believe.
I know he had asked anything for us to go there yet.
Excuse me, somebody say something? Next on agenda is executive session where premature public knowledge would compromise the position of the town. And this is to do with the highway. So I'll need a. Polly Rico made a motion going executive.
Oh, second.
So Rob Clay second it. Any more discussion?
Please disclose if this is going to be bridge fifty.
This is not bridge fifty.
Thank you.
This is highway discussion. Any more discussion? If having none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. So six fifty-five and we're going into executive session. Has been made, continuing the executive session and we're going to go on to our next. Item on the agenda, which would be the highway budget.
Billy Joe's the only one remaining.
Oh, she hasn't got back, so I guess she didn't get the minutes on that. You with us BJ?
He's back. Yeah, she's here.
Okay, so we should be able to continue on the budgets to the highway. Now, if everybody gets the budgets in front of them or not, we can go down through with Joey. We're reviewing them last week. Are you filling some some blanks since then?
Yeah, um, on the revenue sheet, I think the only change there was there is on the anticipated or estimated. Revenue for twenty twenty-one under the line item of FEMA D R forty-four seventy-four. Last from last Halloween storm. Another ten thousand. I brought home some stuff here this weekend and kind of roughly did an estimate of the work that we did all this last summer. Which is documentation is ready to be sent in for that, so we should more. Time enough to get that reimbursement by the end of the year and. We anticipated forty-five thousand last year, got twenty-four something, so that. It should be like another twenty-one thousand coming from what was left over from that first round. And the reason we didn't get all that in twenty twenty is just the way they broke up the projects. Broke them up in what they called hundred percent complete roads. Then the roads weren't complete, so all I was able to send in in May. When I got, when they come around to the site inspections was what they considered a hundred percent complete roads. So. There was a lot of roads that we had worked on last fall. We had expenses and materials in too, but. They weren't a hundred percent complete yet until we did the work this summer. So anyways, we only ended up getting about half of what I had planned on getting in, so. We got that, the remainder of that, and then what's left to commit for the work that we've done. I'm thinking sixty thousand is pretty safe to say that we could use that for an estimate. Which is only ten thousand dollars more. Than what we had in there before. So consequently, by taking ten thousand, adding ten thousand to the fifty for the flood work. Was able to knock ten thousand off the amount to be raised by taxes to six forty-one, three sixteen forty. And I left it at that till Billy Joe could run some numbers to see how that triggered off with the. You know, with the grand list and the how I come up with the tax rate and um. Last year, the tax rate for the highway was point five two three. I don't know if that's on your sheet as well. If it is.
Yeah. Yes.
And then, so as it is right now, with the budget as it is, is uh. Approximately tax rate would be point five five. Um, would raise. Yeah, so I don't think that's what you want to do. BJ, if you're, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say if we got it to six twelve?
That's correct.
Tax rate would be point five two five?
That's right.
Okay. So if we got that amount to be raised by taxes at six twelve, we pretty much would be at the same tax rate as you were last year.
Mm-hmm.
But consequently, that means cutting thirty thousand dollars somewhere. I know with our salt shed in our bridge project that we may. The salt shed, we may be looking to add, jump up our. Uh, money for our match, so. Fairly easy to knock off the thirty thousand. I mean, we can look on the expense sheet. We could take. Oh, we could take fifteen off in the paving fund and then another fifteen off the resurfacing. Um. Could always saw Rob from the equipment replacements on hate to, but. Cause it's good to keep putting that money into the account to have some money built up, so when we need to replace. Which that's usually a continual process. We usually always have something that's coming down the road that shouldn't be upgraded, so.
When's when's your next truck due?
I think we'll have a bucket loader before the truck.
Oh, yeah.
In uh, so.
Yeah, bucket, that would be a fifteen years old or no, fourteen right now, right Joey?
Yeah, yeah. So I think bucket loader and then the ton truck would be right along with it or shortly behind it or just in front of it. In that.
We shouldn't be touching that fund right now then.
Not really, um. With the equipment fund that we have, um, the beginning balance of the year was, as you can see down on the left, the equipment fund, what the balance is in there now. One oh two four ninety seventy. And if we add a sixty-five thousand dollars, we'll have like a hundred and sixty-seven whatever thousand dollars in there. And I just called. The other day just to get an idea what a new bucket loader, just exactly like what we've got would be, and it's pretty close to two hundred thousand. But he said our trade, you know, probably worth, you know, thirty to forty thousand dollars, so. The hundred and sixty-five thousand we'd have in there would buy us a bucket loader, you know, that's it when the time comes.
How many hours does yours got on it?
Ah, ten thousand. Nope, nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six.
Are we putting money into it?
Yeah, we have some, not a lot, but some. It's starting to show, it say each course we got the pit, so it goes, it goes a little more than it used to.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't think it's something we need tomorrow, but just something to think about. It's coming.
Right. That and that little truck, that little truck is. Utilize that quite a bit.
Yeah, that's still in decent shape. The sander and plow for it, of course, are. I'll be there in a. Hopefully they'll live the life of the truck. I think we can make it live the life of the truck, but uh. Yeah, the last truck we had similar to that, there didn't last that long, so.
Joey, do you have, um, what's your plan for the resurfacing? Do you have a project in mind? Or are you thinking, yeah, what?
Uh, there's an area on the Boston Post Road where we left off last year and like to.
Oh, right.
Do on that, yeah.
Okay.
Um. But. Yeah, I mean. If you rob too much from that, a hundred thousand dollars doesn't do you a lot, unfortunately.
Right.
For the pavement.
I know, I'm always so shocked how much paving costs.
Yeah, of course, we got that bridge to do this year, so that uh. Seventy thousand dollars we got in there is all more extra money that we normally wouldn't have into the expense part of it.
Right.
For that, for that bridge, but.
That East Bakersfield Bridge?
Right, bridge fifty, the other one, Town Highway Ford Bridge fifty. But for uh. Um, almost a, it's a one point four million dollar bridge. I think seventy thousand dollars pretty cheap for us.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah.
Nothing really jumping out.
Something in your contract.
Oh, Billy Joe, Billy Joe, are you saying something?
Yeah, what does he think about taking some out of the contract work and bridges?
Well, that's, yeah, I I don't really want to because that was a number. Two big projects that didn't get done last year. Was the sand shed in the box culvert. Um. If we get this better roads grant. Um, we need some money in there to to make a some match possibly. Our insurance services can make up a lot of the match, but we also need to hire a contractor to do some of the bulk of the work. Like we did on the one by Phil's house. Uh, we had a contractor that did, they took out the old structure, prepared a bed and set the new structure, and then we took it from there and draw the materials and. And backfilled and guardrails. We did all the rest of the work, so that was our our match to it, but we need some money to. To pay for that, and I think that time it cost us around thirty thousand for that contractor to do that work, so that's. That's up to fifty thousand is for. This is a bigger, bigger box and deeper, so it's probably going to be more than thirty thousand and. That was a few years ago, so. Prices have gone up, so I don't think we should rob from that. That was the number we had in there last year, but that project never happened, just like the sand shed. Because of COVID. Um, we, we didn't do either one of those projects, so. So really, the probably the most flexible one is that paving fund because there is money in the paving fund. As you can see at the bottom, there's a hundred and. Twenty-seven thousand two oh three oh six in there. If we uh. Take maybe take the whole thirty thousand that we're trying to make up difference. Out of that and only put seventy thousand into the fund. Instead of the the hundred thousand.
Why don't we do that?
That would have, Joey, that would be, wouldn't affect this year as much as twenty twenty-two, right? Or would that affect your paving for this year?
It probably wouldn't pay effective resurfacing because that's on a different line item, but uh. Yeah, it probably wouldn't affect too much this year, no. In twenty twenty-one, it wouldn't affect it much. That much, we're trying to, you know, save up to do like a bigger project, a bigger, bigger piece of road on a stretch dirt here mainly. That's what it's mainly. The idea of it is for, but uh.
Yeah, like la- last year, we were able to take care, take a, do extra because of the paving was so low because of. Basically fuel, fuel prices dropped right down and the paving was probably lowest it's ever, probably ever will be.
Right.
And we had the monies, so that was kind of handy having that.
Yeah, it sounds like the prices are going to be low this year to start with. But that's probably due to change because the price of fuel is going up, so.
Yeah, or you could just, just take twenty-five out of it, make it an even seventy-five.
That's what I was thinking, take twenty-five. Yeah, because they're definitely, I mean, we're either paying for it now or later with the uncertainty in, you know, the financial landscape, I think. It would make sense to cut some. Um, but still leave yourself some money to to plan ahead.
Right, so is that your, is that your desire is to try to get the amount to be raised by taxes down to the six twelve? So that the tax rate is at the five point, five two five area? So it's the same as last year or? Or do you want to bump it up a little bit? Or not?
Well, I can bump it up a little bit, but I'm just. Leary of what we're going to find out in the general fund and I don't want to have.
Right.
Too many raises. Uh. Twenty, so he said six twelve. Yeah, if you, if you made it around six twenty, what would that be? Just that'd be a penny probably.
I two nine right now.
What's that Billy Joe?
It's at point fi- it's point five two nine.
At six twenty?
Um, six twenty what? I I put the highway taxes at six sixteen, three sixteen forty. Are you following me?
No, what'd you say again? That's six sixteen, three sixteen.
Six sixteen, three sixteen point forty.
Yep.
Which makes the tax rate of point five two nine.
Okay.
You took twenty-five. You changed it by twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Your guard rails, you're expecting a bunch of work there Joey or?
Yeah, um, I had a bunch of work I wanted to do last year. Some of it was related with the flood work. Which will get reimbursed for some, but some of it is our own work too. We got some up on Duffy Hill. Where we did, redid the paving that they need to be reset, so I put in that bigger number last year, ten thousand. And ended up. Had quite a few different sites. I ended up doing just one site on Saint Pierre Road because it got damaged up by an accident. Um, last, a year ago, last December and uh. So it's so bad, I had to do that. That ended up. As you can see, that ended up using up most of the tent to do just that one site, so I didn't get to do. Like I said, one of them was flood related, so I'll get reimbursed for most of that, but the other sites on Duffy Hill, I didn't even get a chance to do because. Ate the money up, so I wouldn't, if anything, I'd like to add to that number, but. I'm, it's good to leave it as it is, so I can at least. Get some of that work done and may have to piece the rest of it in the following year, but.
Okay.
By the way, for that guard drill on Saint Pierre Road, we got reimbursed. Oh, a few thousand dollars for that from the insurance company and the person who hit it. Four thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. We got back out of that seven thousand. Twenty-four fifty that we spent. Got in touch with the insurance company and the person who did it and they sent us a check.
I'll see where we could really squeeze. Anymore or it'll end up. Hurting us if we do.
There's places maybe a couple hundred here, but yes, it's the unknown. You're better off to. Figure just a little bit higher and uh. Have some leftover.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty close to level funded as it is. Um, I say we, yeah, we go to the general fund and see what what we're looking at.
So you're thinking.
But it looks good.
You think right now maybe changing the paving to seventy five? For, for, for an expense, right?
Right.
And uh raise. So then we can take uh. Twenty five off from the. Amount to be raised by taxes. That's was the number Billy Joe just gave us, right?
Right.
Six forty one.
What would those bottom lines be now, BJ?
One million, one hundred eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty.
Yeah, I think she just sent it to us.
I just sent it to you, I haven't sent it to them yet.
Oh. Thank you. Okay, so that, that tweaks those numbers, and I don't know if you wanna move things anymore or not, but uh. We got that tat grant with the sand shed that their. The uh. Engineers estimates is, their estimate shows like a seventy one thousand dollar overage. That uh. Because of the price of lumber and everything being higher, material wise, so. You could, I guess, like, I think it was maybe mentioned another time, is uh, that you could. Leave it as it is, the hundred sixty thousand dollars for our match, hoping that the bids come in. Under the total amount of the grant, which is.
Joey, we can't be saying that stuff.
Yeah, okay. Oh. Yeah. Okay. We can't talk about the total match of the grant either, right? No, okay.
Uh, because of the bid process that's going on as we speak.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we're gonna have to, we, we've gotta, we've gotta come up with twenty percent. And, and any, any, any overage, any overage it goes over, so. Then, with any luck, the, the bids will come in and they'll be under, and uh, we don't have to pay any overage. And with the, the amount, the money that you got budgeted in there now for our match, it should take care of it. And if it does go over, I guess you could, you got the right to say we're not gonna do it. Or borrow the money for what needs to be borrowed and. Make payments to. It's hard, hard to know until the bids come in and know where.
Well, that's, that's the unfortunate thing is, you know, is we gotta make these budgets and. Everything's gonna come out about the same time, if, if the bids would have been. Out a month ago, we know what we've been talking about right now.
Right.
So we're kinda grasping. And with the covid, we, we know what's gone on with the materials and. And it doesn't look like that's going down anytime soon.
Yeah, no. And with our. What did we just do with the, the match for the Bridge fifty? Did we put, did we bump that up at all? We probably didn't do it with that.
No, I, yeah, actually. That one there, I mean, maybe we could do a couple thousand.
Yeah. What would that do to the tax rate, Billy Joe, if we added, you went to? Six sixteen, what if you went to six eighteen? Taxes.
Point five three one. Did you hear me?
Point five three one?
Yep.
Yeah, cause there's, there are knowns on that bridge that we know we're probably gonna have to have a couple thousand more there.
So am I changing it?
Yeah, so we probably should put it at seventy two thousand. Three eighty, three eighty?
One one eight two three.
Eight two. One eighty two, three eighty.
Right.
And I guess after you do your general fund, you can tweak things if you needed to, if you. Felt you needed to.
Yeah.
Must have another week before it goes. Anywhere to the, to the printers or?
That's right.
We're gonna finish. Tonight, or try to.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe AM, but. Uh, was there anything on a? Highway mileage or anything?
Yeah, uh. Taking the changes, it's that time of year, by February tenth, gotta have in a certificate of mileage, that's, as you remember, that's how they. Equate our mileage, how much uh class three, at two, how much class two and class three roads that we have. Times the mileage rate that does come up with our state aid for the four quarters that we get it, so. Um. I did a reclassification decision thing, I was gonna send to you there, and I guess I never did, but anyways, uh, all the changes that we made. The numerous roads, uh. I guess there's ten different roads that we changed, there were mainly class four, that we either discontinued or changed to legal trails. And there was uh, some class three that we changed the legal trail as well. So, um. So the summary of it is, is the class three, we uh. Excuse me, we did the four tenths of a mile of class four was discontinued. Three point seven one miles of class four were changed to legal trail. And point three seven miles of class three were changed to legal trail. So, class three, we had before forty five point seven six miles of class three road. And we took away point three seven. So now we have forty five point three nine miles of class three remaining, so that means we're gonna lose a little money in our state aid. Uh, we're gonna lose about five hundred and eighty two dollars a year, five eighty two fifty five, with the, with the current rate that there is right now. Um, when then class four, we had four point one one miles, and now it's at zero, because we don't ha- longer, no longer have class four roads. And our legal trails were points, there's six tenths of a mile of his existing legal trail, we've added. Four point zero eight miles to it, so a total of four point six eight, so those are the changes you'll see on the certificate of mileage. Class four and legal trail really don't. Make any difference, other than their numbers on the sheet saying that's what we have. Uh, that portion of class three is really the only thing that makes a difference. Dollar wise, is we're gonna be losing a little bit of state aid, but. It is what it is. Had to be done.
Yeah. So class two, what was, how many miles uh?
Um, class two, we have eleven miles. Seventeen point five one, actually. Seventeen point five one miles of class two.
Okay.
I was thinking blacktop, we got some class two road that isn't blacktop, I was thinking blacktop, we've got about eleven miles of blacktop.
So, when was the deadline at this has to be signed off by?
February tenth, I needed in by then, so. Uh, I guess I can finish filling it out sometime, not tomorrow probably, but uh. When I get it filled out, and then you guys actually have to physically sign it, and Billy Joe needs to sign it as well. Date it, and then I'll send it in, and it'll be. It'd be the, it's the annual, annual thing that we do every year there.
Okay, so. We can, a few of us can probably take turns, sing and buy the garage, and you can probably bring it to the town clerks or the other signatures.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we need to move on. Budget, so. Think if everybody's all savvy, Joey's budget for now?
Yep.
Alright. So.
Just sent the ambulance.
If you're all set with me, I'm gonna leave then.
Okay, so thanks, Joey.
Yeah, thanks, Joey. Yeah, take care.
Thanks, Joey.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I'm running this off my printers, I'm gonna leave, go grab it off the printers, because I can't see on my little phone. There, you guys got that one all done? Alright, so the ambulance.
So am I looking at this correctly, that we need to shave off three thousand thirty five hundred? Billy Joe, am I correct in reading that correctly?
Right, and I only, I didn't know how you wanted to do it, so I went ahead and. Put in basically either numbers that matched last year's or slightly higher to represent the need. Um. Um, so yes, they, they don't. They don't jive yet.
I mean, we could probably raise. With the new director, maybe we can get him to. Do a little bit more on subscriptions or something, maybe? I don't know.
Well, what we need to take off is twenty four hundred and sixty two dollars and fifteen cents, you probably could take out of salaries. To, to begin with, and maybe he can watch the overtime and, and do um. A better job of juggling things like that.
Right, to watch that overtime, another thing I was thinking about was. Um. Uh, where is it?
So we gotta, on the salaries, are we gonna be careful there, because we did increase uh. The weekends, and they're probably expecting a little bit of an increase.
And, and I do bring your attention to the top part where there's income, where there's no money under grants. Um, I don't really have anybody signed up. To do any extra clinics under the grants, because they can um. Make more money elsewhere, so nobody has signed up yet.
Really?
Yep.
There was no feedback on what the amount they needed of?
They, they liked the. Couple places that were doing the fifty an hour.
That's unfortunate.
It is very unfortunate.
I was thinking about the medical supplies. We had talked about um kind of seeking out different distributors and sharing costs around medical supplies. Do you think we could shave off a little there, or that?
It, no, it's totally possible, especially if they start taking, I, I don't know what kind of inventory previous people had, but maybe. That is something that the new director can look into and have some kind of um online inventory that. Maybe there will be things that won't. And, and they may not have before, I'm just.
Right.
You know. I, I can't speculate about what.
Right, but we don't remember, we. Right, and so we had talked about maybe some cost sharing, yeah.
Yeah, I think you could totally shave some there. Do you want me to take two thousand out?
Yeah. Yep. And considering, I mean, it might be a little bit of a speculation, but some of those supplies. That we're using probably will be covered with covid money.
Could be.
Later, so I think we maybe, yeah, shave off two thousand.
Where, where's that one?
Medical supplies and equipment.
Yeah, fifteen five.
Yeah.
I wanna go back up to that uh. Top where you, you said you got nothing for the covid clinics grants. Uh, was I not mistaken, but they did training on our time, and shouldn't we be getting some reimbursement for that?
True.
Unfortunately, they trained on our time, go work for somebody else.
That is correct.
I think it was, wasn't it like fifty dollars an hour or something for training?
That was a, that was suggested by a member. Because there are a couple of them that are making that with um.
No, no, I'm not talking about, I was talking about reimb- No, no, I'm not talking about, I was talking about reimbursement. I thought the rate for training.
Is seventy.
Seventy if they actually go out, but I thought they were also paying for training. The state. You wanna look into the?
Yeah, I will.
Alright, um, two. We're not too far off right there.
No, it's not too bad.
A thousand dollars?
Take that off the salaries.
If you lower the salaries to three oh nine, we are a little bit more ahead, but we still don't have any payment back to the general fund.
I thought that was at the bottom line. Oh, it's zero. I was off, I was off the line.
Oh, I mean, if you can move the salaries down a couple thousand. Social Security went down a little bit. I don't know. Is that number right, twenty-four?
I'm changing it right now.
And how about the health insurance too, because, uh, Andrew, is he single?
Nope, family.
Family, okay. So, same then.
About building rent and moving that part of that building rent back into the general fund payment.
Yeah, I mean, if you did, you drop that like two thousand and the salary is a couple thousand, you could probably put that four thousand into the loan for general fund payment. This is, this would be a start.
Yeah.
We have in excess of, um, five thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars eighty-five cents.
So, that would be the loan payment?
Yeah.
Five thousand what?
Five one three seven eight five.
And what would the bottom lines be?
Five hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars seventy cents.
Five sixty-four and?
Yeah, five sixty-four, nine sixty-nine, seven zero.
Oh, so, okay. Hey, it matches the top. I don't know if we can do much more of that.
No, I'd say see where it lies.
Definitely, I think this possibility against more revenues on the top, but it's hard to say, you know, we're just getting a new director and we're still in a COVID year, so. Alright, uh, everybody alright with the, the ambulance budget is at this point?
Yep.
Yep. The fire department, that's also.
Yes.
I've got, uh, the opera house in front of me.
Oh, I have a new one for that.
Okay. Gotta go get some more off the printer.
Got your hard copy. Wish you have our house budget last year.
It's usually twenty-five.
Sure we're good there?
Alright, I could probably do this one right from here.
Billy Joe, the opera house one, where's the, we haven't done this year's? Where's the, the, this year's?
Did I not change the date?
No.
No, it just says twenty-twenty.
Yeah, that's twenty-twenty, that's what goes in the book is twenty-twenty.
Oh, right, so, and we don't have what they did last year, two thousand nineteen? Or is it the same?
Let me see if it comes up. No, I don't typically keep these separate like this. I only do it for this one line. Because it's kind of an odd line. So, this just is in the general fund as a, a line of twenty-five thousand. Most of them I don't break out like this.
So, on that Polly, what she's saying is that this year we're only gonna allocate twenty-two five oh nine.
Exactly, I just didn't know what it was last year.
Yeah.
So, I think we discussed this before too, uh, I think the painting, we had had some carryover funds, but I don't think it's still gonna be enough to cover the needs, even though there was some volunteer for section, because I think the bid still came a lot higher than what we had actually set aside.
I think it was around, somewhere's around eighteen-five. But he hasn't given me an update.
Yeah, so how much was the carryover, because it was, that's blended with other buildings, uh, needs.
So, the, in two thousand nineteen, you carried over sixteen-five for painting.
Okay.
And then it got put in with thirty thousand for buildings, so right now we're at forty-six-five for a building expense fund. Is that what you mean Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
That has that painting number in it or no? No.
So, thirty, thirty thousand plus the sixteen-five is just in a fund for buildings?
Got you.
Yeah, because we had a bunch of windows we were supposed to be doing and all the stuff ended up getting put on hold.
Which is good, because now we're getting a new building.
So, we may wanna raise, uh, up a little bit to, to cover the painting if we're at sixteen-five and it was eighteen-five, very well, it could be twenty thousand.
So, do you wanna move it in opera house line or do you wanna do it under building expenses?
I do it in that painting line, the painting of the opera house.
That's in general fund, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
How much did you wanna add to that one, to the painting?
Wanna do six?
Well, if you're saying it's eighteen-five and it could come in higher, I say at least twenty for painting.
Twenty total or, or twenty thousand more?
Well, right now I'm looking at painting of opera house and then zero. Or are you talking about the nineteen eight twenty-eight?
No, we're talking about the sixty-five, I mean, the forty-six five hundred.
No, we're talking about the line item in the general fund. It says painting of opera house.
There's sixteen-five left from last year, correct, or nineteen or whatever that we didn't do? So, we need to, we need to add like thirty-five hundred to get that up to twenty thousand is what you're thinking, right Polly?
No. That's not what I'm thinking. So, the sixteen thousand was added to the thirty thousand for forty-six hundred for buildings.
No, forty-six thousand five hundred.
Sorry, forty-six thousand five hundred for buildings. But I'm noticing that there is a line in the budget for painting of opera house. So, I was thinking that you would put twenty thousand in that line and then the forty-six five we would use for buildings, um, because we're gonna have to equip the armory. We're gonna need money for that, so when I was thinking buildings, that's what I was thinking. Because there is a line for painting of opera house. That's why I was thinking you'd put it in that line.
Yeah, but that whole, that whole description is one thing.
Painting of opera house.
Painting of opera house, town building appropriations.
No, but, well, it doesn't have lines, but it's not one more thing.
Oh, it ain't, oh.
No, the lines just disappeared.
Oh, okay.
Alright. I'm going in here.
Yep.
Yeah, so, looking at that, I mean, that way, I mean, we can look at the billing funds is what it is. And that's already set aside and we know we're gonna do twenty thousand for approximately for painting the opera house. Either we raise that in expenses or we're gonna have to right now, we can just say billing funds could go to the armory and just raise twenty thousand for the painting.
Bingo, let's do that.
Yep.
What are we doing?
Alright, so we're gonna add twenty thousand to the painting of opera house.
Yeah, that's it.
It's it.
Well, I don't know if that's it, because that's it for the opera house.
Yeah. That's it, we're done, let's go home.
Simple.
Okay.
Don't forget.
Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna say BJ, did you add the, um, payment to the general fund from the ambulance to the revenue?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think you need to look at the line, line that's highlighted and decide if that's your pleasure.
Has it been?
So, you're gonna update on the general fund or, because I, I see.
I just sent it over like ten minutes ago.
Uh, well, I'm just seeing the ambulance rent is still at twelve. If we change it over on the other one to ten.
Oh, okay, no, I haven't changed that.
Man, I wish we could all be in the same room together.
I know. Okay, I changed the ambulance rent. The ambulance loan payment is in there.
So back to your question about the, the, are you talking about the contract?
Right.
Yeah. So, um. Did, last time, if I remember correctly, they had asked us to come back to them if we had some different ideas. Were we gonna do that or are we just taking the, the suggestion, the, the option two that they proposed? Is that?
Uh, sorry Polly, I was. You're talking to me that I was just trying to get this, uh. Situated right, that, that, uh. BJ, that fifty-one-thirty-seven-eighty-five should be on the revenue side of the general fund. On a different line item, correct? Cuz it's coming back.
Yeah, I put it under the, the revenue.
Okay.
How come you have an expense on the door, boy?
Cuz, um, Mr Cunningham came and asked us again because they may or may not have.
Oh, that's right.
Alright, what, what was that Polly, you were saying, sorry about that?
So, so the police contract, they gave us two options, they said. Come back to us if you have some suggestions. Um, which, I was asking, are we going back to them with suggestions? Or are we just taking the second option, which is that number?
That number that's in the budget?
Correct.
Should be split because it's, uh. The contract is good, our old contract's good to the first.
Oh yeah, true, I didn't think of that Larry. Let me get that number.
So, yeah, this is something I was, you know, I was. Thinking, we, we need to stay around the same number. And it's unfortunate that we're gonna have less hours or we're gonna have to depend on those extra days of the state police.
Okay, I was just wondering, so we're gonna go with the second option? With the reduced time, which is that number?
Yeah, I think we need to stay around that because, uh.
Okay.
The other, the other number I believe is like sixty thousand, sixty or seventy thousand more.
Right, but he had talked about us potentially having a discussion about that, but I'm fine going with that. The option that we, we've got.
Yeah, that's the unfortunate thing about this. Budget, we've got time to make that decision because our contract's a few months away still, but we need to know that for budget purposes or at least. Be near it. Um, but it'll be half a year, we're gonna be.
The number? For half and half is one-thirty-seven-six-zero-four.
Okay, that wasn't too far off.
Do, do they, they use, uh, office space or building space at the fire station, correct, the police department?
And I found out that the Richford one does too. When they're in Richford patrolling, they use that station.
Do they, do they pay us any rent for that?
No.
Okay. Is that a possibility?
I don't know.
We brought it up when Bob was the sheriff and, uh, we didn't get anywhere with it.
Well, I'm wondering if that's one of the things we go to them with and say, we'll trade you space for some more time.
Especially if they're using it with Richford also. As well as us, yeah.
They're using our space for Richford, is that what you're saying?
Like when the patrol officer is in Richford, sometimes they. Um, need to do DUI stuff or paperwork and they go to the ambulance station for them.
I see.
I mean, we could always ask. Roger about that. But then keeping in mind that they could also go all the way back down to St Albans too.
It kinda makes it convenient for them, so maybe we should benefit a little bit out of it.
Having to go back to St Albans on our, also though.
Yeah.
Alright, so. Wanna go down through. The lines on general fund and. Or actually, we got, the other, all the rest are moved in, right, the rack and.
Right.
So, the only thing I noticed is that we have zero on grant expense. Should we put anything in there? We, I mean, we don't know if, what grants are gonna come up during the year that we might need to match.
What was the big match last year? Was that a couple?
Those were some COVID-related items. Um, only like, I'm one ninety-seven out of our pocket total, the rest were reimbursed.
Oh, okay. There's revenue on the other side. To offset that.
So we probably should just go and put that three thousand? Just, uh, have a number.
I would agree.
Yeah.
What'd you say it was, three thousand?
Three thousand.
BJ, why is the social security less and the salaries are up?
That was a budget. That you're looking at?
No, what did he go sell?
I don't, I don't know what you mean Polly.
Well, salaries are up to two-seventy, but the social security is down. Wouldn't social security increase also if, if salaries were increasing?
It says twenty, it says twenty-two.
You're looking at, you're looking at the, the budget expense Polly.
Yeah.
Actual expense was twenty thousand last year.
Yeah, I got you, okay, never mind, yeah, you're right, sorry.
So, how did we? How do we budget so high with salaries but yet came? That, came under that much?
The library was a little lower due to COVID restrictions and Mary Hatch didn't take a paycheck for about three months when she was laid off.
Okay, so, she's not this year though, right? So we may need bump, we may need to bump that two-seventy back up if. To maybe a two. Two-seventy-five, two-eighty to, we're gonna shortfire while, fall ourselves.
Can we change it to eighty?
I think so. Everybody's expected to get a raise besides and if Mary was missing part-time of the year and. Hopefully by the second half of this year, COVID will be. A little less and everybody back to work, hundred percent.
Did you change the social security?
It's kind of like. Twenty-one-three-fifty.
Well, I'll put it in at twenty-three.
Was that social security needs go to twenty-three?
That's what he said.
Yeah, might as well put, you know, just as a buffer.
Yeah. Okay. What's that town, town building BJ, is that, uh? Building expenses for all the buildings or?
That is the, like water, sewer, lights, heat.
Okay.
Any repairs needed?
Yeah, and that's gonna be an unknown too because with the armory coming aboard. We're gonna definitely gain. Gain some expenses there. Is it gonna offset the other ones? We might have a, some duplicate ones. Well, we will because we're gonna be, you'll still be working at your place and we'll be working at the other one fixing it, so.
I, I did get a gas bill the other day on the three biggest buildings we have. Strangely enough, the armory was the cheapest. It was a little over nine hundred. The fire station was about seventeen hundred, the opera house was fourteen hundred.
How long of a timeframe is that for BJ?
One month. Silly boy, one month.
Yeah. I was hoping you were gonna say it's for three.
It's very sad. On another note though. We have so many, uh, solar credits right now that they have put, um, the solar people put us on hold till we can use up some of them so we don't lose any. Then they'll put us back in the. Rotation because we were on the verge of wasting some. So we won't have, we won't be buying solar for a couple months.
Still on our computers. Are we gonna have a little bit of uptick on that?
Well, that, that doesn't, that's including computers, but it also, um, for the software we use. That costs five thousand dollars a year, so that's included.
And they were gonna move when, when, when if. We move everything that's included in the contract?
They're already over there working.
Okay.
I should re, I should. Explain that, they're not over, they're already looking to see what they'll need.
Okay.
They're just looking at what's already existing before they do anything, they'll come to you to let you know.
Did, did, uh. I know on insurance for the buildings. That must be, gonna have to go up with that building being added?
The, well, the new rates that came in the other day was included, had included that I, I did put it on the day that you signed the paperwork.
Oh, wow.
Well, the buildings and things kind of went down, but unemployment went up because of all the unemployment cases they had last year.
Okay. And the Franklin County tax went down that much?
It did, I double-checked that today cuz I thought it was odd.
Did we put anything in for town buildings? Yeah.
I. No, cuz that's, that's right below painting of the Opera House.
Right. So we're gonna do twenty grand?
I, well, because Polly said use the forty-six-five that's already in the fund, but I don't know if she wants to do more or if that's something you guys wanna do.
Well.
Polly.
What?
So going back on that building fund, you know, we had that amount there, but. Um. For town buildings, I don't know, we wanna just throw twenty in there?
That's, um. It's not a horrible idea, I mean, I don't know if you wanna do twenty, but, um. I mean, I know, for instance, there might be some remediation, like I said, we've been working with regional. Um, and there's funds to get remediation, but, um, I also don't know if there will. Be a match somewhere or, um, what those expenses might be. And we definitely know that, that, that there's gonna need new floors, we definitely know that.
Well, if we put in twenty, that gives us a number to work with so that we know what our. Final amount is. Throw twenty in.
Well, before, before, okay, I was gonna say maybe run a number and tell us where we're at before.
I'm, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
Appropriations, that's a pretty solid number.
Well, it, it is, but I wanna touch on that a minute if I could, so most of them are the same, nothing changed at all except for, we did get one. An appropriation in the form of a, um, help me out here Pierre, um, petition. Minus the signatures because of COVID, it, it's from Cat Crusaders, uh, that would be Jamie Rushford's nonprofit for cats. So that is included if that's what you wish to do.
So they did submit a petition, which is one of our, um, uh, criteria. We also, another criteria is, is that they had, had to somehow benefit the taxpayer of Ennisburg. And considering they take care of most of our stray cats around town. Um, I think that they definitely provide a benefit, that's my thought.
I know she does, uh, a really good job, uh. Especially trying to get them neutered and stuff, so keeping the population down.
We're at point three-seven right now if everything stays as is.
And what were we last year?
We were point three-nine.
Oh, wow. Then maybe we could put that twenty. In.
What did we do right? Oh, sal, well, actually the salaries was a, was a big one. I mean, that's. Almost thirty thousand dollars there.
But we also had a lot of, a lot of, um, places level funded, fire level funded. Rec even asked for less than last year. Um, so we had people who were super mindful of their budgets, um. I think ambulance is the only one that we had to. To figure out.
Well, plus we did the savings on the police contract too, so.
Yeah, that, that is down quite a, quite a little bit. And. You know, like Polly said, everybody was very conscientious of the times we're in.
So, let's punch.
You want me to print it out and send it to you or are you happy with that total?
Uh. Can you see what it looks like if you did add that twenty thousand in the town buildings line?
I did, you want an extra twenty or just add the twenty?
You already had added twenty and it came back at point three?
I had already added twenty.
Oh.
And the twenty for the painting for the Opera House too?
Um. Nope, I forgot that one, that must have been. That makes more sense.
Kind of like this, you can't be. This is adding up.
That can't be, that's too good to be true. Can't be, that's too good to be true. I was gonna say it's kinda nice being back here in the office doing this.
Yes, it'd be nice if we all could be because we could be enjoying your little brownies.
I do miss that.
Yeah.
For sure.
Pushed the wrong button, almost gave myself a heart attack. Point three eight.
So, so what is the total in the building fund now? Is it sixty-six, five? Forty-six, five, and then.
Six, five, and then another twenty.
All right. Sixty-six. Um. Plus, plus twenty in painting for the opera house?
Yes.
All right. Hmm. You said we were at thirty-nine last year?
Yes. The grant list was up.
Wish we had a rough number on how much we'd need in the armory. There's gonna be some vault work there if we're gonna be making another entrance way there too.
No, so I'm wondering in, in that, that town, town buildings, if we don't add some more money, because it looks like we've, or like on a regular year without that, we're already spending seventeen thousand eight hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So if there's only twenty in that line, that really only gives us an extra three. So I wonder if we bump up that line a little bit.
I think we should probably go another ten anyways.
Town buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Because the worst, I mean, not the worst thing, but if we have, because we have it in a, a buildings fund, and if we have enough of it and there's some carryover, there may be some other needs in the town that we're now seeing in front of us right here.
Exactly.
Like the doughboy, for instance, that's not a building, but that's a been on here for two years. And I think, uh, Dan did say that he, they're still searching, so they're not sure if they will need this, but right now they do need it.
Yeah, they had applied to the Daughters of the American Revolution for a grant.
Okay.
We are at point three eight five. Sold.
It would just say sold?
Yes. That's all I have.
You, you think? I was just looking on the revenue side. Uh, would there be any revenue from any grants? Possibly?
I just cautioned you about putting anything in that's an unknown because then you'll short sell yourself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's COVID money still coming, gonna, that's gonna still come in, but again, yeah, you don't really know.
And lots of times you, you have to spend it to get it, so then it's kind of a wash anyway.
Is that what that, uh?
Well, the ambulance did have those times where they had a couple of times where they were given money without having to purchase something, but that rarely happens with anything else.
So where's that almost fifteen thousand coming from?
That was the, um, if Sean's listening, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was Elgers and the restart.
Elger and restart, correct.
Yeah.
Speaking of Sean, where is the economic development line?
Oh.
Or does he have, or, or, or does he have his own budget?
He doesn't have his own budget. I put the mileage in training and I thought I created a line for him today, so let me see.
It was like eleven thousand dollars? No, that's a, that's the Elger grant.
Well, we can put it in with grant expense and economic development expense. We can just do the same line.
Right, because like we were talking about potentially doing the, um, Ennisburg Dollars grant again and those types of things.
So I'm just gonna call it econ dev slash grants expense. What do you wanna put in that?
Uh, what was his? I was gonna say ten.
Yeah, because.
Up it to ten?
Yeah.
Completely, or up it by ten, to ten.
Yeah, I don't know, for some reason on that paper, I've got eleven thousand, but I don't, it looks also like I got Elger grant beside it, but it must be ten or eleven somewhere in that neighborhood.
Ten.
Ten.
Sold.
Three eighty-four.
Point three eight eight.
BJ, what's that line, the general fund deficit line?
That's when we are short. So if we have a shortfall one year, we make it up the following year. So, so last year we were on, we overestimated the delinquent taxes by quite some, and then of course, we always have delinquent taxes for the in that year that we're in that don't come in. Some comes in, some doesn't, but anyway, with what we spend and don't spend and what didn't come in that was anticipated, it created the deficit. Sometimes we don't have one. Mostly we do.
We were forty-five thousand dollars below the revenue on delinquent taxes. What we estimated to what we actually got.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So do we need to estimate that again, see we're no good at it?
It's, it's such a moving target, it really, if we have a good year, it might be good, like if people get some, some money from the government or if they get good tax refunds. I mean, it's all a moving target really. Last year was just really hard on everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Are you happy with this? Do you want me to print off another one and send it?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'm glad my printer's upstairs. It gives me a chance to stretch my legs.
Has our animal control person been doing? How about our public health?
We're, Pierre.
Very good.
You're Pierre.
Yeah.
You're not muted.
That's okay. Do we have, did I get two from you BJ?
There should be the, the revenue and the expense. I mean, two pages, is that what you meant?
I got two emails. Maybe you sent another one I just barely got to.
Yeah, she sent one in between the first one and this one.
Okay, I just barely got that one too, so everything's slowly coming in down here.
A health officer does a great job.
Henry, why don't fix the doors up in the animals?
I think it looks good.
I've seen her now a long time. Look how we work.
No. I get out of here, I can't get back in.
Yeah, oh, you did.
Yeah, I didn't print.
No, well, we're still doing it, but they're not an executive anymore. Are you nuts? Yes, we are. Is it snowing out yet? Whether or not. Are you on guard?
No.
You're not?
Oh, okay, that's, that's for me.
Hey, come on, say hi to your husband.
Pierre, mute your mic.
I'm looking for panic. Looking for the three thousand we added for grant expense.
Yeah.
It was under cemeteries. Then he, now we got the, oh, you added econ grant expense together. So we should actually add three thousand more because I think we had three thousand in there before, then you added ten for Sean. So that line should probably be thirteen.
Right, she did ask that question and we told her two-ten, but you're right, it should go to thirteen.
I didn't realize he was pulling that other one off, yeah. I believe that number does have to be at thirteen. Can we just reduce the delinquent taxes fees by that same amount and then it would equally out same?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So if we put that one back up to thirteen, you added three thousand there. You could take away three thousand, make that one forty-seven for delinquent taxes, and still would be raising the same, same amount of taxes. Is that not correct? Or do I need to add?
Well, if you, if you add the three thousand, it brings us to, to exactly what it was last year. It's point three nine. Can you? Okay. So I added the three thousand in to make it thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
And then I calculated and it brings us to point three nine zero. Did you want me to change? Did you want me to change something?
What you, what got changed on the revenue side? Did you add added that?
Added more to collect taxes.
I'll just see that moving target with the second line again. All right, I. So basically you're uh. It'd be eight thirty-one, seven forty-three?
That's correct.
Feel good?
Think you guys did a great job with what you had.
Exactly.
Surprised, very surprised.
So our next meeting, just to be clear, is this in two weeks, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I will get the letter written for the book and I'll email that to you for you folks to look over.
So. Is there? For people that are wanting uh. Mail to them. They should should know somehow sooner than later.
What are we talking about?
For town meeting.
We we still mail the town reports.
No, for voting absentee.
Oh, if they want to vote absentee, they can go to our website. Daryl and I worked on something last Friday where they just read the top paragraph that. Tells you about voting. You click on the link and it takes you to my email and you just write the email to who wants the ballots.
Okay, on town upside?
Yes.
I can put that back on Facebook too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And how's, what's the cutoff on uh?
Um, for for asking for absentee, we try not to send anything out. Um, after the Friday before, so that would be. The twenty-six would be, we wouldn't be able to mail them out and get them back in time if we do anything after the twenty-sixth of February.
Good. That's all I have on my agenda for tonight. Sup- uh, supper, I see supper, yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
And can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
Um, on the budget, the appropriations you spoke about. Are those gonna be a different item to vote on or is that gonna be lumped in with the general fund?
Would you want me to speak with that?
Sure.
Each one is listed separately and it's online. It will be a yes or no question. So for an example, you would have American Legion a thousand dollars and you would check the box yes or no.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks for that.
Okay, uh, I think, was there a motion?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconds everywhere.
Paul Rico made a motion to adjourn and Dean Wright seconded that motion. Is there any more discussion? If have none, all those in favor signify with saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. We are now adjourned. Everybody have a great week. Hopefully, we don't get dumped on too bad. We need a little bit of snow.